Everyone ready? Okay, we will call this meeting to order February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, everyone. We've got Tim on the controls and Kelly on the minutes today, so we'll try and make it easier for everyone. Relatively light agenda. We do have a quorum present this morning with all five commissioners in attendance. Commissioners, first order of business is the approval of the agenda. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. We have no public hearings today, so next up is county resident comments and concerns. If there's anyone online or in the audience who would like to address the governing body, please come forward and good morning Assessor Devis.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I am Dave Devis. I'm the Sweetwater County Assessor, and I've just got a couple of quick things. Had tax district things in the headline recently headlines recently. I just wanted to let you know for tax year two thousand and twenty-five, all of our tax authorities, so all of our special districts have been approved by the Department of Revenue. So if they did not have a map file, they didn't have proper audits done, that kind of stuff, they would be removed from this list and they would not be allowed to receive a mill levy, but all of our tax authorities are in compliance and we're just good to go this year. You probably received notification on that as well. The other thing was education for our staff is very important, and I wanted to let you know that all of the staff in my office is permanently certified by the Department of Revenue. I have one new employee that's still working through that process. We're hoping she'll be temporarily certified by the end of the year, but everybody else in the office is permanently certified. And someday I'm going to come to this board and tell you that they're all certified. And I'm getting closer all the time, so we're getting, I'm hoping it'll happen by the end of this year, but that's where we're at at this point. Just wanted to update you on that. I have been watching the legislature. If anybody has any questions, I've been sharing information with our delegation. Stuff our association has put together. So if you have any questions on that, I can try and help. But other than that, that's all I have today.
Dave, any questions for Assessor Devis? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions, but I thank you for sending that information out. It was really helpful and we obviously don't have that at our fingertips, so certainly good when when you can shoot it over to us real quick.
Sure, and I have to, Mr. Chairman, I have to give credit where credit is due. Department of Revenue puts out a yearly annual report and the assessor from Converse County Dixie Huxtable, who's the chair of our Legislative Committee, has been doing this a long time. So when these property tax bills come up that are looking at potentially adjusting, in this case residential property and stuff, we try and get that stuff ready just to anticipate the questions and the the questions people are going to have on revenue loss. So I have to give Dixie the credit, but we did get it out to everybody in time, so they did get at least to see it before they voted, so.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for that, Dave. That helps from our perspective. I'm not sure if it helps on the east side, but to be determined, I guess.
Exactly. There's a lot of stuff to be determined right now.
Very good. Thank you for the update. We're still under county resident comments and concerns. If there's anyone else that would like to address the governing body, now is your final chance. And with none, we will go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. Commissioners, this is going to move us right along into Tab A, which is the consent agenda. Before us this morning on the consent agenda are seven items, the first being the approval of the January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes, the approval of county vouchers, warrants, expenditure approval listing in the Commissioners' report, approval of bonds, approval of abates and rebates, and MOU between Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County and the Sweetwater County Sheriff's Office, a request to restaff a vacant position in the Clerk of District Court's office, and a request to restaff a vacant position in the County Clerk's office. Commissioners, I would ask if there's any requests to remove any items off the consent agenda this morning.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
Like to remove the minutes and have that voted on separately because I will abstain, but I don't want to abstain from everything.
Okay, very good. Any other requests? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item number one.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Off the consent agenda is the approval of the January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes. And I believe we're just having an abstention here, so if there's no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Or abstained?
Or abstained, yeah. Sorry, we said it twice, so I didn't.
No problem.
The third.
Motion passes with four aye votes and one abstention. That is going to move us right along into Commissioner comments. Looks like I'm up first. My spot here. Been a busy couple of weeks since we last met. Spent three days down in Cheyenne with all of you for the legislative session and WCCA meetings. It had a very different vibe down at the Capitol this year. I've heard more from our constituents this year and other elected officials expressing their concerns than probably the last two years combined. There's a lot of fear and displeasure across multiple fields, ranging from property tax, law enforcement, the courts, elections, education, and even an apparent issue with county commissioners being a part of an association such as the WCCA. Despite differing an opinion, we've always been able to work with our local delegation to, if nothing else, express our concerns on whatever bills may be hitting the floor. The legislators who have served understand this role, while others have some learning to do. The legislative dinner we hosted with our neighboring counties was attended by most. Those that chose to not even respond to the free dinner invitation stated that this commission is full of a bunch of rhinos who is a waste of their time, which is very fitting for the lack of diplomacy and experience by a few of our freshman legislators. Sometimes it's better to sit back and learn the ropes before you pretend like you all you have it all figured out. Politics is not a game. Decisions are being made at the state level that impact people's daily lives and their children's lives. I've never seen so much game playing and grandstanding as what we've witnessed this session. When our voices of county commission is ignored and not even considered, that says something. We're willing to work with anyone, Democrat, Republican, Freedom Caucus, or independent. Diversity is what strengthens our republic, but to totally disregard and be disengaged when it comes to working together for the greater good certainly highlights a freshman motive. It shouldn't be mistaken that as county commissioners, we represent the entire county, not simply a district within the county. Perhaps the legislature should figure out ways to cut their own spending before they force us to reduce ours. It's amazing how quickly it's forgotten on the east side of the state that county four remains a top-five powerhouse for revenue brought back to the state. Those state coffers would look a lot different if that weren't the case. I thank those legislators from Sweetwater who continue to push and fight for what's right back here at home. I wish I could say the same for all. To keep the gloom resonating a little more, I wanted to quickly comment on an opinion piece that we shared with the local media last week relative to the RMP. It's a topic that is spoken of often and one that is sensitive to the majority of residents throughout this county and for good reason. It may be a decent win for the greater Little Mountain area, which we all supported, but it's not a win for pretty much every other aspect and designation that we fought hard to push back and protect. I take offense to the article basically encouraging everyone to cowboy up and work on improving the plan as needed, rather than continuing the fight and exploring all available options. That is our job. We were elected to represent the people, all people, not just one specific interest group. We worked tirelessly for the Governor's Office, Senator Barasa's office, and Representative Hagaman's office to keep the conversations rolling on the blatant ignorance demonstrated by the local BLM office, who refused to consider any of the arguments and factual data we brought forth, accepting that life will go on, that we should simply roll over on the BLMs of disservice to the people of Sweetwater County. Celebrate your win quietly and leave the rest to those who are focused on all areas of multiple use. Transitioning to a little more positive report, I attended Western Wyoming Community College's Chili Cook-Off on Saturday, the twenty-fifth, where I was asked to be a judge alongside Council President Jeanne Demas from Rock Springs and Rick Lee from the Rock Springs Chamber. Lots of good selections and a nice family event, followed by the Mustangs Wrestling Team dominating every single match in their duel later that afternoon. Last Tuesday, Commissioner Richards and I met with representatives from NextTerra Energy about the proposed Jackalope Wind Energy Project. The project is proposing two hundred and thirteen wind turbines collectively generating six hundred megawatts of power on a mix of private, state, and BLM lands and spanning south of the interstate from basically Point of Rocks to Table Rock. It will be interesting to learn more as the project makes its way to the planning and zoning process. Later that day, I attended two of my new liaison assignments. It started with Young at Heart and then later that night concluded with the Events Complex. I'm not sure how that keeps happening. Last two years I had Board of Health and Southwest Counseling on the same day, and now these two are on the same day, so it's not a complaint, but I guess just luck of the draw. Young at Heart heard an update from the Director of Nursing and the Home Health Department Services. They also discussed the need for a strategic plan and shared a financial report, which summarized that year-to-date, they are operating at a loss. It was further shared that the Young at Heart Foundation is no longer associated with Young at Heart, and the board expressed some displeasure with how their relationship came to an end financially speaking in particular. The Events Complex held their election of officers and Janet Hartford was unanimously approved to take over the reins as Chair of the Board. They discussed their master plan and went over some of the additions and inclusions after hearing from local stakeholders and their input. They're gearing up for summer events and already planning for fair. Canny plans to present their annual report, I believe, here at our next meeting, so she presented that to the board as well. There is a bit of concern with the status of the Pacific Soda Project. The Events Complex has been in discussions about a partnership to rent RV spaces, but without knowing exactly when they'll be needed due to delays, they've halted any recruitment of other events, and as such, they're wondering if they should consider a cutoff date. I had a brief meeting with County Grants Manager Christina Marshall when we were made aware of the U.S. Office of Management and Budget's temporary pause on agency grant loan and other financial assistance. I think it's safe to say that set off a nationwide panic. Here at the county, we have several pass-through accounts to various outside agencies and component units, and we also learned of the crisis created at the airport project. Considering the amount of FAA funding that was awarded to them, it sounds like that pause has since been lifted, but some other complications remain. I assume we'll hear more on that from Commissioner Richards in his report. Last Saturday, I attended the Red Tie Gala put on by Memorial Hospital and the Hospital Foundation. It was a good event as always, lots of fun and laughs. Shout out to all of those involved behind the scenes and those donating to the cause through sponsorships or the silent and live auctions. And lastly is a quick update from the Public Works Department. The library projects are currently in their submental stage. The Southwest Counseling projects are progressing at various stages. Public Works Combined Facility Project has finished demo work on the fleet floor and will begin a series of concrete pours throughout the month. Framing and interior work will begin in the coming weeks on the Administration Building. The Detention Center Rooftop Unit Project is also in the submental stages and they're fine-tuning contracts and project timelines. Maintenance handled seventy-seven work orders in January. Road and bridges hauling road a mill and road base to various locations while also working on delineators signage and other maintenance needs. Engineering is considering the best methods for completing the three large colder projects they've designed in-house, and a pre-construction meeting has been set in March for County Road Fifteen, the nine-mile road reconstruction project. With that, Commissioners, I would stand for any questions? Not Commissioner Slaughter, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated previously, last week, we all went to Cheyenne to meet with Wyoming County Commissioners Association and our local legislators, discussing much of the legislation that will potentially affect Sweetwater County over this year. I cannot more strongly echo the sentiments that were put forth by our chairman with respect to the perception that he had of what's taking place in Cheyenne this year versus what has taken place in the past. Probably enough said, I think there will be other Commissioners who speak to this also. On the twenty-fourth, I traveled home from Wyoming County Commissioners Association. On the twenty-seventh, I met with my new liaison assignments, Grants Coordinator Christina Marshall, Land Use Director Eric Bingham, and attended a workshop for the Star Transit Board. The Star Transit Board was working basically towards their budget for this fiscal year. There were other things that took place, but I was just trying to learn the members and how that board works, so it was a good experience. Each of these meetings went well, and I think I'm ready to hit the ground running with the new assignments. On the twenty-ninth, I met with Sally Shoemaker and Kayla McDonald to begin preparations for the Congressional Tour Group that will be visiting Sweetwater County on August sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Kayla and Sally were both very gracious and willing to help with the arrangements to make the tour a success for Sweetwater County. We will be meeting several times over the next few months and adding other people to our group to ensure that we have a great presentation for the members of the tour. I then joined a Jackalope Wind Project pre-application hearing that was already in progress. I felt it was a good warm-up for me for the meeting scheduled that evening with Jackalope Representatives and Commissioner Jones and myself. It did provide valuable information that helped me better understand both the project and the process. Later that afternoon, I met with representatives of a Green River group that are interested in developing the county property immediately northeast of the River Bridge, our road and bridge building property. They are considering trying to turn it into a park or recreation area once the county has moved our road and bridge operations to the night facility. I explained some of the logistics to them and let them know that I would inform the commission of their intentions. I agreed to maintain communications with them as we continue progressing on the night project. That night, Commissioner Jones and I met with representatives of NextTerra Energy that are working to develop the Jackalope Wind Energy Project. NextTerra Representative Glenn Schuber and Attorney Mary Ann Shaner gave us a presentation outlining the overall plans for the project and then answered the many questions that we had. It will be interesting to see the progress of this proposal as they get closer to a final project. On the thirty-first, I presented a preliminary itinerary for the Congressional Tour Group sponsored by the WCCA. I think the group was pleased with the progress that we've made so far. We will be fine-tuning the itinerary over the next few months. On the first, I attended the Memorial Hospital Foundation Red Tie Gala. It's an event we look forward to every year. The major focus to fundraising this year was the lab project that is projected to be completed in the summer of two thousand and twenty-six. The Foundation Board was very gracious and mentioned several times the contribution of matching slip funds that were granted by the County Commission and the collaboration that is necessary to complete such a project. Yesterday, I spent the afternoon updating the financial records of the Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board and preparing for a regular board meeting today. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would end my report and stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Slaughter's report? With none, Commissioner Toman, the floor is yours.
Okay. If I can save this without losing it there. Okay. I attended the WCCA Legislative Conference in Cheyenne with my fellow Commissioners, January twenty-first to the twenty-fourth. We went through bill review and prioritization, had dinner with our local legislators, received training on county road and bridge systems, thanks to our Public Works Director Gene Magersky for his leadership and other training sessions. We visited and were recognized on the floor of both houses of the legislature. I'll speak a little bit later on that. January twenty-ninth and thirtieth was supposed to have been a Bureau of Land Management Resource Advisory Council meeting in Cheyenne. It was canceled, so I did not attend that. Last week, I went to Arizona, enjoyed four days of rain and somewhat warmer weather while you had twenty below, but I came back to fifty-three degrees, so that was that was pretty nice. I visited France from Flagstaff to Whitman to Tucson Mesa. The big jam show is always a favorite of mine, going to see all the fossils from the Green River Formation. It's it's pretty exciting and all of the other items that they have at that show. I finally got home at one AM Sunday evening due to the United Pilot being stranded in Cody, but it was nice being able to fly in to and from our Southwest Regional Airport. During the week, I responded to some of the bills in the legislature, and I have to say Senator Pearson did respond to my request for why she had proposed to, she'd co-sign on a bill to limit our reserves, and she said it was to make a statement, and I just I just hope that our new legislators and leaders will focus on their duties to the state as a whole and not propose costly bills that will jeopardize local governments. So I think that's been the message from all of our from all of our commissioners. This week, I shall continue my outreach to our newly liaison assignments. I've I've reached out to the library, the Golden Hour, the Juvenile Probation, but I will follow up with them this week. We have our monthly federal partners meeting on Friday. Thursday at nine AM, there will be a Sweetwater County Threat Assessment Meeting at the Sheriff's Training Center. I encourage fellow commissioners to participate at least one of those because it's all of the emergency responders in the county attend those meetings, thirty-some people, and they need a commissioner's name on the on their participation list to help them get some of the grant funding for the emergency response grants that they receive. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Toman. Any questions or comments for Commissioner Toman's report? I would comment that before anyone tells us how to structure our reserves, they should probably look at their own and start with that, but.
Exactly. I agree totally.
If it weren't for those reserves, we may be in a totally different budgeting scenario this year, so it's funny how that comes full circle.
Yes, it was very frustrating to see all the bills proposed and Kat Urbitide did a little study and research that each bill that is proposed costs anywhere from six to fourteen thousand dollars. So if you sign onto a bill just to make a point, you're costing the state a lot of money just to make a point that's maybe outside of your jurisdiction to begin with, and it seems like half of the bills in the legislature are being made to make a point instead of to do something that's for the best of all of us in this state. So I'm I'm pretty frustrated with the process and our new legislators and our leadership in Cheyenne.
Commissioner Richards, the floor is yours.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. After a meeting two weeks ago, I attended the Sweetwater County Fire District Number One Board of Directors Meeting where they approved an ongoing contract with the Reliance Fire District to provide fire services to the residents of that area, so good news on that front. While I was there, I took the opportunity to relay to them that Sweetwater County continues to value our partnership with them and the services they provide throughout the county. I see there's an update from some of our firefighting partners later on in our agenda, so I look forward to hearing more from them. Once that meeting was over, I headed east, braving the sixty mile per hour crosswinds and drove to Cheyenne, where I joined all of you at the Wyoming County Commissioners Association Meeting and Legislative Conference and a visit to the Capitol Building where the wind really blows. For those of you that are listening that may not know, the Wyoming County Commissioners Association is a professional organization that all twenty-three counties belong to, and it provides three real important functions to its members. First thing it provides is networking. Through the Association, Commissioners are introduced to local, state, and federal officials, as well as other elected officials at all levels. Gives us the opportunity to meet, become familiar with people from all over the state and nation who are in positions that might have great influence on the implementation of policies that can have massive effects on us right here at home, but can also become a great resource for locally elected officials like me, a gas and Twinkie salesman from Rock Springs, Wyoming, just a Joe Schmo who somehow gained enough support from the people of Sweetwater County that they entrusted me to sit here with the four of you and work and make important decisions on their behalf right here in this courthouse. It gives us the opportunity to interface with people like our congressional delegation, our governor, the Wyoming Director of Homeland Security, the State Public Records Ombudsman, people from Y.U.W. and more, not to mention the ninety-plus commissioners from around the state and a thousand or so from around the the country that membership gives us direct access to, so we always have people on speed dial that can help us solve our problems or at the very least point us in the right direction. Which brings me to the second important function that membership in the Wyoming County Commissioners Association provides: training. Holding this office and knowing all these people doesn't do a lick of good if we don't know how to do our job. And don't think this isn't a job. We all know it's a job. It's a hard job. There's a massive learning curve when you become a county commissioner, and the membership in the WCCA gives us access to And the membership in the WCCA gives us access to training that gives us the tools to do this job right and do it right by our constituents. WCCA provides resources for us to learn how everything in this big complicated system works from where our revenue come, comes from to all the different ways we should and shouldn't spend it and everything in between. Along with that is the knowledge of what statutes, state and federal, we operate under and how those statutes affect not only our ability to do our job, but the lives of the people we work for. Road and Bridge, Health, Law Enforcement, Fire Protection, Planning and Zoning, Human Resources, Liability, Public Records Transparency, so many things cross our desk. And we have to make sure that every decision we make is consistent with the laws that govern us. Speaking of the laws that govern us, that brings me to the third important function that the Wyoming County Commissioners Association provides us, a united voice. Every year commissioners from all over the state meet, review hundreds of bills and decide as a group whether we will take positions to support, oppose, or just pay extra attention to individual bills that are weaving their way through the legislative process. These are bills that determine how much revenue our counties will receive from year to year. There are bills that decide how we have to spend that revenue. There are bills that have effects on the industries that support us, on the retirement that our public employees receive, on the elections that we hold here at home, on the residential development plots that we approve, so much more. Taking these positions has nothing at all to do with pitting your county elected officials against your state elected officials. It's just the opposite. In fact, for the most part legislators around the state, and yes, even our federal delegation in Washington, take what county commissioners have to say and incorporate it into their bills and policies. They listen to us and use our knowledge to help them craft better legislation, better governance. Often we recognize negative and positive effects that proposed legislation can have locally and provide that knowledge and insight. Since we work together as an association, we can do that effectively. And anything that helps us effectively represent our constituents is a tool worth having. That's why I was nothing short of flabbergasted to see one of our local representatives submit a bill that would basically ban us from doing our jobs. Currently, State Statute eighteen three five twenty two says, quote, "Each Board of County Commissioners may take out a county membership and cooperate with associations and organizations of other counties or county officials within or without this state for the furtherance of good government and the protection of county interests. The cost of membership may be paid with county funds." For the furtherance of good government and the protection of county interests. What the good representative from House District Sixty's HB three thirty two proposes to do is to tell us we can't use county funds to further good government and the protection of county interests through memberships. It completely ignores the value that such memberships bring to our constituents, the networking, the training. It ignores the connections to state and federal officials that come from such memberships. And yes, that includes connections with the Wyoming Legislature and its members. It ignores the training that we receive by being members. And yes, that includes the training we receive that gives us the tools we need to stay in compliance with the statutes that the Wyoming Legislature passes. What it doesn't ignore is the united voice that membership in an organization like the Wyoming County Commissioners Association gives county commissioners in the face of an organization like the Wyoming Legislature. Because I think that's the real problem that the good representative is really trying to solve here. The WCCA is effective. It is effective at keeping an eye out on what our legislators are doing. It is effective at supporting good legislation. It is effective at rooting out and defeating bad legislation. I don't know, like HB three thirty two? And let's not even get into the onerous reporting requirements that HB three thirty two would put on commissioners. I think before a legislate, legislator starts running bills that pretend to make counties more transparent, they should look in the mirror and realize that members of the Wyoming Legislature have exempted themselves from the very comprehensive open meetings requirements that we as county officials already abide by. If the good representative wants more transparency, then maybe she should start by providing that transparency from the body she belongs to. I think the most insulting part is that the good representative might understand all this, but when given the opportunity to visit with county commissioners from Southwest Wyoming, as well as many other county officials from Sweetwater, Lincoln, Uinta and Sublet Counties, she couldn't even be bothered to show up. While most of our legislative delegation was engaged with us, listening to the real issues the counties face, she wasn't there. I guess she was back at her state paid for hotel room, eating state paid for food and writing bad legislation that was suggested by who? The secret caucus she belongs to? I don't know. Maybe when the session is over, she'll come visit us and explain how she was elected to do right by her constituents, but us county commissioners weren't. Or she can just come to our mic and yell question or something and walk away. I guess that works too. Maybe if she had a professional organization she could join that could teach her parliamentary procedure. Other than that, though, the visit to Cheyenne was good. We got a lot accomplished. And while the mood in Cheyenne, as, as the chairman said, was very different from years past, I can assure you that your county commissioners, all of them, were working hard on behalf of everyone in Sweetwater County. While Cheyenne is always great to visit, I'm always happier when I'm back on this side of the state. On the twenty eighth, along with Chairman West, I attended a briefing by representatives, by representatives of the Next Air Energy regarding the Jackal Wind Project. On the twenty ninth, I remotely attended a Sweetwater County Outdoor Recreation Collaborative Steering Committee Meeting. And then later that evening, I attended my first Southwest Counseling Board Meeting where they approved their fiscal year twenty six state behavioral health funding application. Something we'll see later this morning on our agenda. On the first, I attended the Hospital Foundation's Red Tie Gala. It was a great event and raised plenty of funds to, for use in our community hospital. I also dealt with the news last week that one of President Trump's executive orders put our airport terminal project in jeopardy. Essentially, the Office of Management and Budget interpreted the order in a way that led them to stop payment on discretionary grants that we were expecting to receive last week in order to pay our contractors this week. After some hectic calls to Senator Brasso, that ruling was reversed overnight, but now we are facing a new level of obstruction and now they have blocked those grants at the FAA level. Devin is working feverishly to free up those funds because this has the real potential to cost the funding partners hundreds of thousands of dollars in unrecoverable expenses. So I will keep you updated as news comes in. Going forward on Thursday, I'm planning on attending the enterprise meeting. Following that, I thought I'd drop by the local emergency planning committee meeting. And then I plan to join the sheriff in a law enforcement planning workshop with the good folks from Superior. After that, nothing, Mr. Chairman. I plan on getting on a plane Thursday evening, flying out to Miami, getting on a big boat and spending a much needed vacation with my family. I don't plan on taking my county phone or computer. And while I assure you that I'll be thinking of all of you, I do not plan on thinking about the Wyoming Legislature at all for the ten days that I'm gone. So if you need me, you're out of luck, but I have full faith that you can, I'll keep the lights on without me. So I'll be back just in time to stumble in for our next meeting on the eighteenth. And I think that is all I have for you today, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
I do work double time last week.
Commissioner, any comments or questions for Commissioner Richards' report? I too will be on a boat in that same area. So I likely will not have my phone or computer as well. Looking forward to that. Appreciate your comments. Very well stated. Commissioner Jones, you're bringing up Baton cleanup today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That one's going to be a little tough to follow. So partially we'll say me too, but I do have a couple of things I'd like to add. In consideration of time, I'm only going to report on activities since the last meeting. Other than to give a report as to why I was absent. But first of all, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to take off one meeting while you continue to do the heavy lifting of the commission. I was absent due to the fact my family and myself attended the inauguration of President Trump. We've been to Washington DC a dozen times or more for a variety of reasons. In my eyes, this trip was one of the top three, only surpassed by both trips for my kids to be presented their gold congressional award medals by Congress. While I originally thought the trip might become somewhat of a letdown due to the changes caused by weather and security concerns turned out to be extremely memorable. The real highlight was the fact that my kids were as excited as anyone to attend and for them to know and understand the gravity of this election made me a very proud dad. We were in the Capital One Arena while President Trump joined us and signed executive orders. At that time, my son came over to me and gave me a big hug and said, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. That made the trip and associated expenses worth every minute and every penny. It's refreshing to have youth engaged in politics and also understanding the importance of paying attention and exercising your right to vote. I would like to take a second. Thanks Senator Brasso for his hospitality and assistance in making this trip so special. He gave, gave us a tour of his new minority whip office as well as taking us to the rotunda. We just happened to be there at the exact time Carrie Underwood was practicing singing. So that was pretty special. Senator Brasso is a true gentleman and loves this state and our citizens and we certainly appreciate him. We returned in time to join the afternoon session in the legislature in Cheyenne. So I was happy to sit and watch our local legislators and be introduced in both the House and the Senate. Following two days, obviously I joined all of you in Cheyenne for the Wyoming County Commission Association Meetings. I felt the meetings were very informative and useful as always. One of our sessions were, in case people don't know, one of our sessions was where we reviewed hundreds of bills that affect the counties. In particular, we focused on ones that, that directly affect counties and county commissioners. It was good to go over those as so many folks seem to be referring to the people we represent as the people. The more information we have as commissioners, the more knowledge we gain from conversations and debate, the better we become as elected officials. One of our new representatives from here in Green River has a bill. And as has been mentioned, sponsored to prevent county funds be used to pay any association memberships. She didn't have any conversations with any of us in order to find out if this is a good or a bad idea. At least to my knowledge, she still has not, other than myself. She has no knowledge of why this will affect us, how it was affect, how it will affect us or whether or not it's good or bad. So I reached out to her and sent her an email asking what the reasoning is for this proposed legislation. And her response was that she felt that the money needed to go to the people and we shouldn't be spending it on associations. And also mentioned that they are seeing considerable overreach. My reply back to her was to ask what overreach they are seeing. And her response to me was rather than answer that question, excuse me, rather than answer that question, the question for me was whether or not I support associations. I responded back quickly with the fact that in order for me to make good knowledgeable decisions, I need to know both sides of the conversation. So again, what specifically in detail are they seeing an overreach to which I received no response. So I can only take that to mean that there really is no overreach at all. It's just a little session and chest pounding, which is unfortunate because that's not a good way to legislate. Starting the week of the twenty seventh, I spent as much time as possible watching the legislature for a variety of reasons. One of course is property tax relief. People can love or hate property tax relief. That's all up to you as an individual. But not backfilling counties will absolutely directly affect Sweetwater County citizens in terms of services provided, and that will be in a negative way, not a positive way. It's too early to know the total effects, but services will be reduced with no backfill. Make no mistake about it. So when services are reduced, people need contact with legislators, push them back for backfill and let them hear why you are upset. As we will be put in a position that we have no choice at that point. And it's actually too late. I do applaud Mayor Mickelson and his upcoming town hall on the fifteenth. Encourage everyone to participate and become informed. Unfortunately, Senator Jones and I will be out of town, so we will not be able to attend, but would like to mention Senator Jones has consistently fought for a backfill to support our citizens, the people. On the twenty eighth, I attended the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Master Planning Meeting. Discussed our ideas about improving efficiencies by moving different departments to different locations, future projects such as reworking the tunnel, which has been in need of repair for many years. It was a great meeting. Always good to be proactive and have them looking into the future. On the twenty eighth, I attended a public meeting held by the Jackal Wind Farm Group. Attended in the hopes of hearing how the public feels about the project. Unfortunately, less than a dozen people attended, so didn't really gather much information. On the twenty ninth, I attended my first Board of Health Meeting. Most of what was covered was an MOU between entities such as the hospital, Southwest Counseling and others. The MOU was set up an agreement to proposal, a proposal to help parents who are using illegal drugs. Also, on the twenty ninth, I attended part of the Memorial Hospital Sweetwater County Finance Committee Meeting. Bottom line for December was in the black, so that's always good news. On the evening of the twenty ninth, I joined, as Commissioner Slaughter mentioned, joined Commissioner Slaughter with the representatives from Jackal Wind Farm Project. Well, I appreciate their desire to meet and discuss the project. I really didn't receive answers to my questions about things such as, excuse me, as such as negative impacts to wildlife like pronghorn due to the presence of turbines as well as negative impacts to those and other animals due to sound waves. I also asked how wind projects coexist with oil and gas. Was no complete answer. Asked about the systems that will be used to stop turbines from spinning in order to save raptors. Those answers were incomplete. Asked about their tax credits, no complete answer given. I asked about their ability to self-report for tax purposes so, so that the county receives proper taxes. No real answer given. On the twenty ninth, I testified in favor of raising snowmobile registration fees for residents, non-residents, commercial rentals and providing reduced fee for antique snowmobiles. Excuse me, I picked up cold last week and I'm have a tickly throat still. This bill, House Bill zero 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 four, needs to pass or we will lose miles groomed around the state. That will lead to closures of areas for non-use or limited use. It will also reduce the positive impacts that snowmobiling has on the state's bottom line. Snowmobiling brings in approximately two hundred and fifty five million dollars a year to the state of Wyoming. So this is an important piece of that puzzle. I too attended the Red Tie Gala, great event, very important for raising funds for the hospital and the foundation. That foundation helps all departments in one way or another at the hospital. So every dollar given by the citizens of Sweetwater County goes to good use there. For the last week or so, I fielded many calls, texts, and have been involved in many conversations about the Rock Springs BLM and the Resource Management Plan. I want to state that I do not support the current plan by the BLM. It is devastating to our oil and gas and the jobs in that industry. It also has some very negative impacts for the trona industry both now and in the future. So for those reasons and others, such as losing access to public lands, I do not support the plan the BLM implemented a few weeks ago. While I was in Washington DC, I spoke with Senator Brasso about the RMP while we were in Cheyenne for Wyoming County Commission Association Meetings. I met with Nolan Rapp from Governor Gordon's office on the same topic. I was also able to speak with BLM Director Archuleta. And I am not done fighting against the RMP. So everyone knows at this point, nobody really knows for sure if the Congressional Review Act can be used. Depends on which team of attorneys you listen to as to whether or not that can be used. There are differing opinions. They don't know if we can make changes to the current RMP as issued. They don't know if we can select a different alternative or if we can select a different alternative and make changes to it. At this point, nobody knows for sure what direction we can go. Far too early for me to bank on one decision or one thought. At, at this point, the decision really is in the hands of the folks in DC. Of course, our governor has say in it. We have, we have input as well. But the, the process is in the hands of Washington DC. We are starting to hear as of last night, a couple of hopefully positive ideas and thoughts that may come about. But as we all know, things change in Washington DC about every twenty nine seconds and, and sometimes they take wild swings. So we don't know where we will end up. With that, I will end my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your report. Questions or comments for Commissioner Jones? Does everyone feel better?
Not yet.
Good reports, Commissioners. It's always good to stay on top of the issues. And obviously this year there seems to be more than usual and certainly the concern we've all spoke to. So it's important to work together, even if there is differing opinions there, but we'll see. But we'll see how it shakes out down in Cheyenne and hope for the best. With that, it does conclude the Commissioner comments portion of the agenda. That's going to move us right along into Tab B, which is the action and presentation items. The first item before us this morning is the Wyoming Cowboy Hall of Fame's support for Sweetwater County inductees. I believe we have Andy Nelson, who's on the Board of Directors for the Wyoming Cowboy Hall of Fame. And Andy, at this time, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure you can hear me well.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. That's great. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much for allowing me to chat with you this morning. First of all, I want to introduce myself. I'm Andy Nelson. I'm from Pine Dale. I served two sentences as a county commissioner up here in Sublet County. So my, my condolences and thank you very much for your help. When you started in talking about the RMP and legislature, I got this pit in my stomach and I broke out in a cold sweat. I feel your pain. I understand what you're talking about there. Also joining me is the President of the Wyoming Cowboy Hall of Fame, Valerie Remick. Say hi, Valerie.
Hi, my name's Valerie. Thanks for letting us on your agenda today.
All right, Mr. Chairman, a year ago, I approached the county commissioners in Sublet County and was asking for a little help. First of all, the Wyoming Cowboy Hall of Fame is a nonprofit organization. Our goal is to preserve, promote, perpetuate, publish, and document Wyoming's working cowboy and ranching community. I approached the Board of County Commissioners in Sublet County for some, a little bit of assistance in collecting, helping us to pay for collecting and displaying and preserving the stories and photos and videos of these such individuals. And today, I've come to you, Mr. Chairman, to do the same. It's a, it's a minimal contribution, but it would help us pay for a lot of these things that we put together to preserve this history. I have a couple of videos at your discretion, Mr. Chairman. I would like to show you at least one of an inductee from Sweetwater County with your permission.
Please do.
All right, now hopefully I, screen share will be good to me. And let's see here. Okay.
You could read us a poem.
We started turbing sheep when I was in the sixth grade for my uncle. And then Joanne and I met and, and I went to work for her folks. We had a migratory sheep outfit at that time, 1965, we sold, we sold the sheep. And Joanne and I was forced enough to get along from the former, former, former administration. Got into cow business. I didn't know a lot about cows, cows, but I had some really good mentors, both cowboys and cowmen. The difference between the cowboy and the cowman is the cowboy can put the bull through the gate. The cowman will tell them which one, which bull he wants. Try to get your cowhood to look like your ideal cow. And, and bull selection has a lot to do with it. Joanne and I have been fairly successful in the Red Henges, cow roads.
We've been very blessed. We have good children and we haven't had a lot of disasters. So it's good to be where we are right now.
You see, a cowboy, he has mud on his shoes and sand on his eyes. He's usually happy. You have to, you have to want to do this to be successful. If, if you're here because somebody told you you had to work here, you're probably not going to like it much. But if you enjoy the lifestyle and being outdoors and see the cactus bloom in the spring, you enjoy the country, you enjoy what you, what you see every day. I'm really blessed when I chose a partner that, that enjoys the lifestyle I have and put up with me.
He is a darn good cowboy. He's also a good person, a good neighbor. And I think that to over 58 years, he is exempt by the cowboy lie.
Gary Zikotnick, Larson.
Were you able to see that?
Didn't see it. We could hear it.
Oh, man. That's too bad.
Sure if I should interrupt you or not. I didn't know if it was just audio or.
Yeah, no, it's, there was a neat looking video that went with it as well. Valerie just texted me, said she couldn't see it as well. Dang, I hate technology. Would you like me to try the other video?
That's up to you. Yeah, we still have some time, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll try the other video and hopefully I can get the video part of it to, to work.
Who was the inductee that we just heard?
Gary Zikotnick.
Okay.
Is who, who that one was. Let me see if I can, doggone, all right. I'll, I'll try this one more time, Mr. Chairman, and see if we can get another, another, another video here. Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure you're going to be able to see this one as well. I'll go ahead and let her run.
They were really close. I mean, they, they fed off of each other. Okay, what are you doing today? And this is what I'm doing. And they always helped each other, no matter if it was a big ranch job or just a day-to-day thing. Mom took care of the ranch day-to-day, doing the chores, milking the cows, feeding the lambs. She's there with building character, but she kept doing character building after all the kids were gone. She still had bone labs.
Whole thing, outside and around the animals. And I was around all of them. I felt like my animals. This is just one of, I had a dog with every, every horse I had a dog.
He took care of the sheep and the camps and did all of that.
They, they did, I mean, they didn't do everything, they hand in hand, but they worked together. And whatever had to be done, they figured out how to get it done and included the kids and all that. And mom always said the secret to raising good kids is to do things with them. And so dad was definitely the socializer. He went to town, did all the shopping, the socializing, the meetings. Mom stayed home and did the work.
He really loved horses. And as a young man, he was raised in Kemer. His dad had a sheep outfit, but dad was always out in the hills out of Kemer Elk Mountain, chasing wild horses down the ridge, just trying to catch him a good one to train and, and break and sell. And so he had some very good horses.
He loved his sheep too, so that was kind of his heritage and what the family was really into when they, you know, came to this country. And so he went out and moved the sheep camps and tended the herders. Mom always used to say he had a temper like a banny rooster, and he'd get, he could get glad just as fast as he got mad. So they balanced one another out. But, you know, our family vacations, we're going to work sheep and doing stuff together and working with the livestock and that type of thing. But dad was always, you know, looking ahead. And the one thing he always said was, you want to invest everything you can because they don't make more land.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I apologize that you weren't able to see those. But that was your own Commissioner Toman that was talking on that one. That was in reference to her father and her mother is also a member of the Wyoming Cowboy Hall of Fame as well. These videos, all the presentations that we have cost us, well, as you know, cost money. And we were blessed to get Sublet County to agree to $1,500 supplement to help us with these videos, photos, websites, all this sort of stuff. And as a perpetual obligation to the county. They've run it through their historical preservation board budget, and it may even be moved into their museum board budget, Mr. Chairman. But we respectfully request and ask if Sweetwater County would, would do the same with a perpetual $1,500 donation to the Wyoming Cowboy Hall of Fame.
Thanks, Andy and Valerie. I would have been in severe trouble if I told you not to play that second video, so I'm glad, glad that worked out.
I don't know. They're always trying to pry into my private life, and I don't know if I like that.
Yeah, we're gonna need a copy of that video.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll send it to you. You bet.
I made the mistake of taking my niece to lunch one time with him, and I did nothing but pry secrets out of her.
You know, those videos, we show those videos at the induction every year for the inductees. And that's the highlight of the, of the whole day.
So did I understand that right? You said 1,500 from Sublet, and they're running it through their historical preservation budget?
Yes, and, and they may be shifting it to their museum board budget. There's, there's a little negotiation going on there. But yeah, they just run it through that budget every year, perpetual $1,500. And, and that's to help specifically with your county's inductees. You're not paying for somebody else's.
Okay, so it is an annual contribution?
Yes.
Okay. And how soon would you need an answer on this?
You know, what, at your discretion, Mr. Chairman, what we do in Sublet County is after the budget is adopted, that money has been put into that account. The budget has been adopted, then the Executive Director of the Wyoming Cowboy Hall of Fame just sends an invoice.
Okay. Other questions or comments, Commissioners?
I will abstain.
Your folks are already in. You don't have to abstain, Mary.
Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention and for putting together, you know, the different productions. I think it's important to highlight such a significant piece throughout the state here. We'll probably further the discussions with, similar to what you've stated with what Sublet County is doing, and, and look at that at budget time and far, as far as whether we give, you know, an additional 1,500 to, you know, the museum and run it that way, or at least it'll give us a little time to explore some options if, if that works for you.
You bet. That works wonderfully for me. And if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, Valerie Remick will be following up.
Okay.
I just want to thank you guys for your time.
Very good. Short and sweet. I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Well, thank you both for taking the time to get on our agenda, and we will be in touch.
You bet. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Commissioners, that's going to move us right along into item number two, which is an annual update, 2024 annual update from the Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism. With us this morning is Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism President and CEO, Janessa Meredith. And good morning to you. And she brought goodies.
Good morning. One second. That was kind of sneaky on that last one. Yeah, fun. Don't worry, they don't teach you how to fix it. That must be going with Christchurch and Gorge, right?
It's always when you come, Janessa, city council, county commission, it's always.
The vibe.
Maybe it's me.
Technicals would just come with me everywhere I go. It did perfectly. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sam.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you mentioned, I'm Janessa Meredith. I'm the CEO of Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism. Thank you so much for allowing me some time today to share the 2024 annual report of how the lodging tax was spent. So you have this report in the bag that I gave you. As you know, the local option lodging tax is a board made up of 11 volunteers. Six of them are appointed by the City of Rock Springs, two from Green River, one from Wamsetter, one from Superior, and one from the county commission. We have an incredible board. The entire mission is administering that lodging tax in a way that generates visitation to the area. The lodging tax is a 4% local tax. 2% of that comes from the statewide lodging tax, and 2% is the local option, which is before voters on the general, general election ballot every four years. So that brings us the 4% lodging tax locally. As you know, we operate a visitor center on Elk Street. When the opportunity came available to move into that building, we jumped on it in 2020, and I've seen increased visitation every year. One year from 22 to 23, we had a 33% increase in visitation. Over this last year, we had another 11% on top of that. So generating a lot of foot traffic in that building, making sure people are aware of everything there is to see and do in the area when they're traveling to and from the national parks. The lodging tax collection, you can see how that's come in over the years. This last fiscal year, it collected almost 1.5 million, increasing pretty dramatically over the past three years. There's a budget breakdown there in the report on page three. You can see how the budget is broken down. 79% is spent on a marketing plan. So by state statute, the lodging tax has to be spent on marketing to generate visitation. We can't build an attraction with it. So the bulk of the budget is spent on that marketing. 7% is event grants, 3%, we provide funding to the chambers of commerce to operate as visitor centers, 3% to the Sweetwater County Events Complex, and 8% for administration. The block grants that I just mentioned to the chambers help them operate as visitor centers. Then we also administer a block grant to the events complex that helps them with some other out-of-county marketing and event recruitment as well. As you know, any event in the county that's hosted that generates visitation and involves people staying in hotels and campgrounds qualifies for lodging tax funding. So we fund almost 30 events a year. Those events have to be hosted by a nonprofit. But if there's ever an opportunity for an event to be hosted in our area, we want to make sure that we jump in and provide some funding to make that happen. We also do a lot to recruit events to our area. Allison Valsik is our industry relations manager. She travels to different conferences around the country, encouraging international visitation, American Bus Association visitation. She's actually at an event right now promoting Sweetwater County to that group of folks. So we work really hard to get events to our area. Most recently, we hosted 2023 and 2024 state soccer, 3A and 4A, boys and girls, which went off really well. That was a total economic impact of $6 million. We're in the process of applying for additional events in that capacity right now. On page five there, you can see those are some of the committees and boards that I serve on. I serve on the Wyoming Hospitality and. Uh, I serve on the Wyoming Hospitality and Tourism Coalition. That's a statewide organization. I've been on that board for seventeen years, I believe. I'm currently the Vice Chair of that board. I serve on a lot of committees locally and host a lot of committees locally as well. And also Destinations International and One West, which are regional and national boards. Also on page five there, our master plan, which most of you are familiar with, we created a master plan for tourism in the county in two thousand twenty-one. We've been doing a lot to work on the goals that were established in that plan. Uh, we worked on some gateway enhancement renderings, uh, specific to Elk Street, but all of the gateways into the City of Rock Springs, um, hoping to uh secure some funding to build out those gateway plans that we have just had created. Uh, we also uh were able to receive some funding from the Wyoming Office of Tourism to do some destination development projects, which included the City of Rock Springs wayfinding signage. Uh, phase one was um fabricated and installate, installed in um spring of two thousand twenty-four and summer of two thousand twenty-four. That actually will be a three-phased project. Uh, we're working on phase two right now. There are eighty-six signs. We're able to do thirty at a time. Uh, they're about ten grand apiece. So it takes some time to get that project completed. Uh, those funds are intended to be used for such things as wayfinding. So we're really excited that that funding has become available through the statewide lodging tax. Um, we couldn't find funding for that any other way. And, and when it was originally constructed in two thousand eleven, uh, two thousand twelve, that was something that the city fabricated and installed and, and the weather had really um done damage to those signs over the years. So we're excited that we can be able, be able to update those signs. Another piece of our strategic plan um is building more infrastructure or enhancing what we already have. And so to kind of kick that off, we commissioned a feasibility study for an indoor sports facility. That study will be done in April. Uh, there, our consultants are working on it right now. So they came to the area, they interviewed everybody in our county that um has anything to do with an indoor sports facility or running sports programs. So collected up the inventory, met with a lot of local experts. They're putting together a steering committee um that will kick off once the feasibility study is done. Um, I will say this is a project that I received more positive feedback on than I have received for anything I've ever done in almost twenty years in this position. Folks here are really, really passionate about youth sports. Um, and this is not only something that would generate visitation from a tourism perspective, but enhance quality of life as well. So excited to see what that feasibility study says. Um, does it make sense? What sports should it, should it house? Um, where should it go? Things like that. We'll, we'll have the answers to those questions here soon and can decide if we move forward in that direction. Um, also on page six there, uh, some of the tourism product development that we've worked on over the years, our Flaming Gorge bus tours have been successful. We'll be doing those again this summer. Um, wanted to also remind you that we are open to private tours. Those have been very popular um over recent years. The private tour um can be a group for a group of twenty or more um and has the exact same experience as a public tour. So stopping at nine different locations, lunch and snacks included with an expert step-on tour guide. Many of you have taken that tour and it's really a great way to showcase the Flaming Gorge National Recreation Area. Sandboarding, we're still selling sandboards. It's an opportunity that we have. Um, it's starting slowly, but definitely something that's done in other areas and is successful in other areas. So we sell the boards at the visitor center and then um rock and roll rentals rents the boards here locally too. So if anyone wants to experience that, they have the opportunity to do so. In two thousand twenty-four, we did something new as well. Um, we sent out a resident mailer. Hopefully, most of you have received that. We sent it out in April last year. We'll do the same this year. Just encouraging residents to explore in our own backyards, rediscover Rock Springs and Green River, reminding them of how special our area is and also how to um host family and friends when they come to the area in a way where they get to experience all that's great about Sweetwater County. Um, as you know, also the Flaming Gorge um All-American Road designation that we received in two thousand twenty-one has um qualified us for additional funding to build turnouts around that byway. We recently secured funding for a site called the Henry's Fork um Art and Interpretive Location with a walking trail. This is a location near Manila. You can see the town of Manila from this location. There's petroglyphs there. Um, we received a hundred thousand dollars from the Wyoming Office of Outdoor Recreation to begin um building out this site. This is in partnership with the Ashley National Forest. Um, it will have a parking lot, interpretive signage, um, a walking path and so on. So that's phase one that will begin this spring. Um, we've also applied to the National Scenic Byways Office for additional funding to complete that project. This is the first site on the Wyoming side of the byway that we're able to build out uh based on that All-American Road designation. So super excited to be able to move forward with that project. Uh, we also provide um assistance to downtown Main Street. In Rock Springs, we've uh provided funding for those, some of those holiday lights that were in Bunning Park, um, sponsored the Snowman Stroll and the Smores um events during the holiday season. We also sponsored some bronze art that was recently placed in downtown Rock Springs. Um, every year we partner with KUTV Two News uh to feature the area. Again, rediscovering Rock Springs and Green River was the theme that we were featuring in this past year. That turns out really well. Lot of viewership. I can get those numbers for you if you're interested. But that is one of the um easiest ways that we can reach the most folks that might be interested in traveling to Sweetwater County. Uh, the board also provided funding to replace the flags at the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce, uh, representing the fifty-six nationalities um that we're known for. So those flags will go up when the weather is nice. Um, as you remember, part of that, uh, the pie chart of the, the spending of the lodging tax, seventy-nine percent is, 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 is tourism marketing. There on page nine, those are some examples of some of our marketing. A lot of those billboards you'll see locally, but the majority of what we do obviously is targeted outside of Sweetwater County to generate visitation. So a lot of times locals don't see everything we do, but that is the bulk of the lodging tax expenditure. Um, one other thing I wanted to highlight there on page nine, we do public relations efforts all year, every year. We partner with an agency that pitches stories for us to writers all year, every year. I attend media missions with Wyoming Office of Tourism. I attended a media mission in New York in May, met with thirty travel writers. A few of those writers came to our area. Um, and this was the first time that we've ever been featured in Cowboys and Indians Magazine. And if you haven't seen it, it's a really incredible publication. Um, there's an entire article about Sweetwater County, um, and then kind of a subsection article as well. So I can send you links to those. We work really hard um every year and have a number of publications that were featured in. Those are listed at the top of page eight. Um, but Cowboys and Indians was definitely a huge win for us in this last year. Um, we also won a digital marketing award for our Flaming Gorge video. So it's an organization um called HSMAI and we were, won the Bronze Adrian Award for a digital video, single entry for the Sea Flaming Gorge Country video. Um, this organization has been doing this for sixty-eight years. Um, I know some of our other partners around the state have been recognized for their digital marketing efforts as well. This is the second time that we've received an award for our efforts. The last one was for our website. And now this one is for the video that I'm about to show you. The audio is phenomenal. If you could hear it, just imagine. I'll send you links to those articles that I was mentioning in some of these videos as well. Um, and then obviously we can do a lot to generate visitation through marketing. Um, but if people come to our area and they have a bad experience and the hotels are on the front line, um, it's all for naught. They'll tell everyone about it and it will go against our efforts. So we want to make sure that the people who are providing great customer service in our area are recognized for those efforts. So the Reach Awards I created in two thousand eighteen, oh, two thousand eight, time is flying. In two thousand eight, uh, it stands for Rare and Exceptional Achievement for Customer Service and Hospitality. So we make sure that local employees um are recognized for those efforts on a quarterly basis. Um, we also host a customer service training program called the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. We have over one hundred and fifty Sweetwater County Certified Tourism Ambassadors right now, which is really incredible. So these are folks who have been trained on what makes Sweetwater County special and how to communicate that to visitors or anyone that they encounter um in their employment or personal lives. So it's an incredible program. It's a national program and we've been a part of it for about three or four years. So really proud of those efforts. Allison Volsik also leads that and does a phenomenal job. And then every year, after we spend all that money on marketing, we want to make sure that it's actually generating visitation to our area. So we commission a conversion and advertising effectiveness study every single year. Um, the organization is called SMARI Strategic Market and Research Incorporated. We have used them since two thousand eight. Uh, so we have apples-for-apples comparison. Um, and these numbers are phenomenal compared to what they were ten years ago, I will tell you. Um, so we know that our advertising that we placed influenced um almost eighty-six million dollars in visitor spending. When people come to our area, they bring about two point five people, which is down. That's usually been about three. So that's, that's interesting. Um, they engage in about four point eight activities. They stay for about three point three days. So they're bringing half a person less, but they're staying a little bit longer. So our length of stay is increasing and that's interesting as well. Um, the average trip spending per party is over fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, we influenced fifty-nine thousand visits. So for every one dollar that we spent on marketing to generate visitation, there was a return on investment to the local economy of seven hundred and forty-five dollars. You can see there at the bottom of page eleven, the activities that they are engaging in when they're in the area. Um, we know that almost fifteen hundred people locally are employed in tourism. And from an overall spending um perspective, it's over a hundred and sixty million dollars um in visitor spending a year. It's, is received in Sweetwater County. So um tourism is a big business here and I am honored to be a part of it as always and would take any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Janessa. Appreciate you taking the time to come over. We needed something that was a little more uplifting. It's a little light heart, doom and gloom the last few weeks. I always get to hear from you and all the good things that travel and tourism is doing. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
Don't have a question, but a compliment, I guess. Um, our Wyoming State Snowmobile Association will have our annual convention here first weekend in March. We did it two years ago as well. We got grants from you guys both times, so we appreciate it. Um, shouldn't I? I think it's worth noting that the, the grant program is not just send an email and get a check. There are several things that are required of it, which I think are good. Um, and so I, I like the program and I like what it's done. And certainly it helps a lot of, a lot of organizations put events on that maybe not, might not be able to otherwise. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Absolutely. Um, I developed that program in two thousand eight as well and always wanting to make sure that we're very transparent and have the same expectations for every group. I think that's what's made it successful and having that, the board that really oversees that in an engaging way, I think really helps as well.
Tell me more about the feasibility study. Um, obviously it looks into best location, everything you went over. Does it look into cost too?
Well, there'll be estimates. Um, depending on the direction that we go, we'll go deeper into cost, but it will do estimates based on what's being built in the region right now. And as we know, time will change, change those costs. But it will give us that comparison data. What could it look like? What might it look like? Um, but it'll all be from an estimate point of view right now until we actually decide a direction and move forward.
Okay. When did you say you were expecting that?
The board meets with them in March and the final report should be done late April, early May.
Very good. Any other comments, Commissioners? Well, thanks again. We appreciate it. Keep up the good work and we'll look forward to seeing you out and about as we're traveling in the back doors of uh the great Sweetwater County.
Get out and explore. Thank you.
Thanks very much. That's gonna move us to item number three under tab B, Commissioners, which is the Approval to Assign Resolution twenty-four dash zero three dash C C dash zero one from three oh seven Horse Racing Incorporated to three oh seven Horse Racing LLC for the location of six ninety-nine U N A Drive here in Green River, Wyoming. Um, this was a follow-up to the action we took two weeks ago. I believe that was for the Rock Springs location and after all that, then uh there was a realization that we forgot about the Green River. And so I believe we have Brent online. Brent, would you like to add anything?
Just briefly, um, thank, thanks for your time and I appreciate you saying we, uh, as Sally and I were joking around. This is probably more my fault than your fault. I simply forgot um that we also in March of two thousand twenty-four had a resolution for the Green River OTB. Um, Sally would say blame my Rock Springs high school education, but uh we discovered that, we circled back around and all we are asking you guys to do today is to effectively do the same thing you did last hearing, but with that Green River location.
Well, I rescind my we after the shot of Rock Springs High School.
Thanks. Thank you.
Questions or comments on the resolution? If not, I'd entertain a motion to, I guess, approve and assign in the amendment to Resolution twenty-four oh three C C oh one, changing the designation from three oh seven Horse Racing Incorporated to three oh seven Horse Racing LLC for the Green River location at six ninety-nine U N A Drive as presented. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Brent. I think that gets us caught up.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Have a great day.
You too. That is gonna bring us to a break, Commissioners. We're about ten minutes ahead of schedule. So let's take about a fifteen-minute break. We'll resume here at ten thirty-five. So let's take about a fifteen minute break. We'll resume here at ten thirty-five. We will call the meeting back to order. We left off under tab B, item number five, which is an application update from Southwest Counseling Service for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. And with us this morning is Southwest Counseling CEO Linda Aker. Morning, Linda.
I wish I was that tall. Good morning, County Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. Southwest Counseling is applying for the F Y twenty-six application for behavioral health services in Sweetwater County. This application really delineates the services we do provide in the county as well as do we have the staff availability to serve them. And the other part that was really important this year was the priority populations that we need to be addressing the priority populations of the state, which Southwest Counseling is one of two centers in the state that is very successful in getting people enrolled into B H R. So if you have any questions about the application, I would certainly entertain those, but we're asking for the board's approval for this application to go forward.
Very good. Thanks, Linda. Questions, comments, Commissioners?
A lot to absorb.
If not, I'd entertain a motion. I guess we need to approve this? Or is it just kind of a courtesy of letting us know?
Chairman West, I believe according to the agreement that your approval is wanted.
Well, I would entertain a motion to approve the Southwest Counseling Service fiscal year twenty-six state application as presented. So move. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Thank you so much.
Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Linda. Next on the agenda is the Sweetwater County Fire District Update. We expect them. Yeah, if you would, I'm, I'm going to move forward. We'll get this cooperator status letter. So let's skip that until we get the others in attendance and we'll go to item number seven, which is a Sweetwater County Letter to Request Cooperator Status for the Bridger Teton National Forest. Any discussion or questions on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Toman.
They've already started their cooperative process, but they, I know Commissioner Taylor Jones has been going online to find out when they have their meetings because they have not been officially inviting us. So this is to make it formal. So we are requesting to be a cooperator, to be involved in the planning of the forest.
Very good. Yeah. And thanks to Danielle Betancourt for helping us prepare that. No other questions or comments? Entertain a motion to approve the letter requesting cooperator status for the Bridger Teton National Forest and authorizing the chairman to sign.
Mister Chairman, I would make, like to make that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Toman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. We are now going to move right back to item number six, which is an update from the Sweetwater County Fire Districts. And Alan, you want to head us off?
Good morning. Sir, good morning, Chairman, Board. Just wanted to come quick update. So we have Green River and Fire District One here, and I believe Dusty from Wam Sutter is supposed to be. He's online. So anyway, just kind of give, uh, let the chiefs speak for themselves. Tell where, how great the fire warden, new fire warden is and just be bad or indifferent, as I told them, whatever. You know, they want to say just kind of be a little bit.
Very good. Morning, Mr. Reporty.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you for giving me some time. My name is Jake Robory, Assistant Fire Chief with Fire District Number One. Yeah, just real quick update. Last year's season, the twenty twenty-four season was pretty busy comparatively to the last several years. But we had a really rock star crew. So we, uh, we went out and we were pretty aggressive all summer and did a lot of work out in the county. Had a really good group that built a lot of enthusiasm and ownership with their program and developed quite a bit of esprit de corps. So we were pretty proud to see that and just kind of see that team building throughout the summer. Coming up into this summer, we've got seven applicants already. We started advertising in January. And we've also got a few existing firefighters that are interested in the seasonal program and a couple coming into our annual recruit academy. Coming up in the end of February that are, that have expressed some interest in the seasonal. So we're, we're a little saturated right now with applicants, which is a really good thing because we've had some difficulty in the past selling the program to, uh, to qualified applicants. So couple other updates from Chief Kitchener's. We just need to keep in mind that we have to renew our contract. I believe it's up in June or July. I can't recall the actual date, but we do need to get to work on renewing that. And also continuing to work on the truck with the industrial siding money. There is a price increase coming in April from the apparatus manufacturers. So they want to pump the, pump the throttle on that a little bit if possible. But yeah, everything has been going very well. We've enjoyed cooperating with the county and, and providing this public service. So, um, and the guys, the guys just have fun with it and are, they just find it really enjoyable. So we're proud and honored to, to be a part of that. So with that, I'll stand for any questions or concerns.
Very good. Comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Jake, just, just to reiterate what I said last week, week before, thanks, thanks for your partnership. We, we really appreciate it. We haven't had a chance as a board to discuss the difference in prices that some of that might need to wait till budget time.
Yeah.
But looking forward to continue to work with you in the future.
Yeah, yeah. Just let us know when you're ready to meet on that and talk through it. We're happy to help.
And you have a new liaison to the fire warden, so he'll have to handle most of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Appreciate the update and certainly the relationship with Sweetwater County. City of Green River. Good morning.
Morning. Thank you Commissioners for letting us get, get up here and speak and, and, uh, working with Alan Adams here. It's been really good. Communication's been great. We're, we're also looking at putting on some new folks here pretty soon. And with that, we're working with B L M to help us continue to make sure all of our folks are red card certified so that we can go out in the county and, and do the work that we did. But everything seems to be running great and smooth and we look forward to the partnership and, and continuing to work with Alan and, and you guys with, with everything that you guys do for us. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I guess I do have a question. It seems that you guys are being called more on ambulance calls or is this the same as it has been?
So, so we're pretty consistent with, are, are you talking about in the county or in the city of Green River itself? So in the county, we're pretty consistent with the calls that were going on, mostly crashes and stuff. That's pretty consistent. It might be up a little bit just because of the amount of traffic that's coming through on I eighty and stuff. And with the, uh, different industrial sightings that's happening, you know, with, uh, construction that's going on like out at the plants and stuff and the improvements we're doing out there. So we probably have a few more crashes that we're responding to, but it's nothing out of the, out of the ordinary of what we usually respond to. So we haven't, we haven't added, you know, had them calling us out for EMS specifically. It's, it's all crashes like it's been.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Who else? We got Dusty online?
Yes, sir. Um, thanks Chairman and turn on Commissioners. Basically, I kind of turn on what the other two departments and chiefs said to turn on. Thanks for the working together with everything we've got going. Seeing everything seems to be going pretty smooth and mostly on our part. I, we spent a lot of time last year turning over helping Carbon County as well. So it's, it was a good season to turn on a lot of experience for some of the newer guys and look to continue the growth and partnership with you guys.
Appreciate that. Dusty, any questions or comments, Commissioners?
So, um, along the, along the lines of what Jake was saying, just so you'll know, um, I've already in progress meeting with, uh, with John DeLeon and getting all the, all three districts update, updated, the MOUs updated. So that should be, um, working on soon as far as the price increases that's Fire District One has requested. Um, John has a copy of that and he asked that I give a copy, which I did to, to Gary so he can do the analyzations of the three different options or something like that. But, um, none of them are outs, you know, outlandish by any means or like that. They're just, um, what they're wanting to do is to, you know, asking for that increase so that they can get qualified and keep qualified candidates, which, um, I'm all for. So for that, I'll, any questions for me?
Looks like you're getting off easy today. She always waits until it's over.
How's the grant process working? Have you found other grants? I know you're working on the one.
So as I shared with you yesterday, Williams, which I am ecstatic about, has responded and is willing to, to donate toward that grant process, the matching process. As high as high as that was, then I got the email from the organization that, um, applied for the grant. Coco is what they're called. And due to the uncertainty of the releasing of federal funds, they are pushing the grant off. So it's not, it hasn't been killed, but they're pushing it back until spring. So it now, um, we won't know anything, um, for another couple of months. I was supposed to know something by the end of this month, but, um, but they're pushing it back just seeing, you know, making sure that the funds are going to be available for the R release. So just waiting on that. Christina and I are actually meeting Friday to start the, um, the federal one, the CWDG to the state foresters, um, starting that, starting on that grant. Again, still kind of unknown is the, the funds should be released. Um, that was rescinded. So there shouldn't be any issue with those federal funds being released for grants. So we're gonna move forward, um, with that one as well. Just, you know, in case the other one doesn't come through.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks gentlemen. Appreciate you keeping us in the loop and sounds like things are moving down the right direction. So keep up the good work and let us know if we can support you in any other ways, except financially. Thanks very much. That does conclude the regular business before you all this morning. Commissioners, we do have an executive session to discuss real estate. It is likely we will not be taking action upon coming out, but we'll see where the discussion leads. With that, I'd entertain a motion to enter into an executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
If I could have the floor for just a minute.
Sure.
Sorry, this is not on the agenda and unusual, but I just got word that it looks like the Senate has gone from a vote of a 50% tax reform to 25, now back to 50, uh, with no backfill. Senator Jones ran an amendment for 12 and a half percent backfill, uh, which did not pass. And she is the only one of our senators who spoke in favor of this. So that's very frustrating and disappointing, but that's where we're headed at least at this point is 50% and no backfill.
Yeah. And we were having some, Commissioner Jones and I discussions with Cesar Davis last week in regards to what that impact would be for Sweetwater, just on the 50% residential value. That is 1.926 million for Sweetwater County. That's our 12 mil. It's not countywide. That's specific to our 12 mil. So there was some comment that, uh, the effects of this legislation wouldn't have any, I guess, I guess wouldn't have any harm on local government. And, uh, obviously, as you can see there, that's far from the truth. So very disappointing to see that. And I think it was 25, then 50, then back to 25, and now we're back to 50. So
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
We know how to make cuts. It'll hurt. We can absorb it. But, um, while he's here, I'd like to put Jake on the spot. What would a 50% reduction in residential property tax do in Fire District Number One?
Thank you, Commissioner Richards. I think, um, the last figure that Chief Kitchener got from Dale was 41,000. But I'm not sure if that was just the 50% or, uh, some of all the bills, if all the bills went through. Pretty good chunk of change for our small little organization.
No doubt. Any other comments before we enter? So I again would entertain a motion. Thanks for that Commissioner, to enter into executive session to discuss real estate.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Jones is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. We are now in executive.